I'd like to welcome everyone here to the Manoisa City Council Ordinary Meeting. It is 9:01am and I now declare the meeting open. I'd like to start off by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the land on which we now meet, the Kalkadoons, and pay respects to elders past, present, and emerging. I don't want to miss a step, so I'd just like to note, council's ordinary meeting is recorded in accordance with the council's recording of council meetings policy. Individuals may be recorded, and by remaining in the public gallery, it is assumed consent is given that their image is inadvertently broadcast. I'd just like to start with some procedural motions. Can I get someone to move that council accepts late item one, Gallipoli Park Pump Track and Recreation Development, design and construct tender number RFT/2021-07 into the Tourism and Events, Sport and Recreation Library Portfolio? And that council accepts late item two, the Western Queensland Alliance of Councils, Building Blocks for the Future, Communiqué for Executive Services Portfolio.
Move.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. All those in favour? And that's Carrie. I'd now like to ask the deputy mayor to start with a prayer.
Thank you, madam mayor. Lord, let the light of your divine wisdom direct our deliberations and decisions, and shine forth in all the proceedings and acts of Mount Isa City Council. May we seek to preserve peace and harmony, promote wellbeing in our city, and continue to bring the blessings of good governance, government in this area of our responsibility. Lord, grant this prayer to us who work for the common good through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, deputy mayor. So that now takes us to item three, which is the public forum. The business of the agenda is suspended by the chair to give the public in attendance the opportunity to address the council. And we have a couple of people who have questions, so Carrie will pass the microphone, and if you can just state your name, that would be great.
Good morning, the worshiped mayor and CEO. I sent three service requests to the council at the beginning of the month. I'd like to find out if it has found its way to your request.
Thank you, Godfrey.
Through you, madam mayor. Director Wallace, you're responding to these ones?
Thank you. I brought that up because I've come back from Brisbane. There's a change in speed limits.
Yeah.
Many drivers, different places, do not look at the signs.
Okay, that's fine. The last one there is the Camberwell Street and Mary Street roundabout. So we took that back to the designers, the RPQs, who produced the documents for us to construct to. And they were happy with the catsides that were in place based on the design that they produced. So we are required to act on the design requirements that are put forward there, so...
That might be so, but it totally is wrong with the Queensland standard.
Okay.
So you're having roundabouts in Brisbane, Townsville, and other largest towns, and we have one in Camberwell Street, which is totally wrong. The tragic part is that they have to write raised signs, but they saw that they're all the right.
Okay, well, because we have to design to the standards that are provided to us in the design documents, that is the instruction we have going forward.
Right, but I suggest, look at the standards again. In my request, I gave to the standards.
What we'll do is, we'll actually provide a response to you in writing, so that you can see what the differences are between what they've designed to and the requests that you've put forward.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
But it still doesn't comply with the Queensland standard. If you get an engineer who knows about road building, then he should come up with it. Because it's wrong. You can't write anything wrong.
Okay. What we'll do is, we'll provide a formal response to you based on the design documents and the engineer's sign-off. Is that okay?
Yeah, fine.
Fantastic.
In the meantime, last Monday, I put another service request in. It's to do about no entry sign into the east-going lane at Isa Street when coming out of the car park of the swimming pool. There are two no-left turns, which is fine, but there's also a sign saying no entry, which faces the driver, meaning I shouldn't go into that crossing at all. In other words, I can't turn right going into town. So most of the days, it doesn't apply to me because I drive to this ethnic life in Galway. But I've seen other cars apply to them.
Thanks, Godfrey. And that's been a problem for as long as I can remember. Yeah. It's sort of... Yeah. And I'm interested to look at the idea you saw on the coast about the school with the red line, so I'll get some feedback on that. That sounds... yeah.
I do talk for Watson, I do talk for... Now, Breakaway Tree used to have all the grassmowed, walkway was installed along the bank of it, tables were put there, chairs, benches were installed for people to sit. We don't get the birds and whatever would happen there. Now, lately, somebody went through the mower and boat for fifty, sixty metres. There are benches and tables with concrete. The tree has abruated it and they're just... Benches are there, the framework is there, but the seats are gone. The council, sometime in the last couple of years, we have shown benches in concrete, but they have to have a graffiti. Please do something for the people living in the sunset and playing there. I know they're not a very economic one, but they should have to come by these other people for the possibility of...
That's right. Well, Godfrey, you're the second member of the public to bring this issue up, and I think we identified that the council, this wasn't a council initiative, it was actually a community initiative by an organisation, is that right? But so, we identified that even though it wasn't a council initiative, it was something we were definitely going to look at. Was that the outcome for that one?
So, deputy mayor might want to speak to this one?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the question, Godfrey. Yeah, it is an old community project. It was not council responsibility, and I was involved in it in a previous employment, so I do know about it. But it has not been maintained, and that's the issue. It's been in there for twenty-plus years that I'm aware of. But I believe it features in the budget that we're drafting at the moment, so it may be something to watch for in the next twelve months to two years, yeah, where it will be rectified, yeah. Yeah, thanks.
No, thank you, Godfrey. Good to hear from you.
Morning, Brett Peterson. Brett Peterson, through the chair, mayor, councillors, and CEO. Question in regards to where we are with the motorsport recently. I know we haven't discussed at a draft budget meeting in regards to capital expenditure for that sort of project. I suppose 2017 was the first initial drawing. 2020, there was discussions on it. In February 2020, there was discussions on the advisory committee. And I suppose there are several groups at the moment are trying to decide on which way they go, whether they expand on their current area, or whether they then start to make plans to move and build, I suppose, one complete motorsport project rather than having areas all over the place. But I'd just like to know where we are at the app with that.
Thank you, Brett Peterson. And Brett was a councillor of Manoisa City Council for how many years? Was it? How many? Twelve years. So he knows his stuff. The deputy mayor is actually the chair of the project, and would you like to speak?
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
Yeah, and I did outline this a little bit in the budget consultation, to you Brett, as you're aware. But, look, at the present time, we have asked for land to be allocated to the project. We are primed to go and to get started on the project when that's given that clearance to us. We've done a terms of reference. We have a framework there for an advisory committee to be commenced. We haven't as yet applied for funding because we don't have the land, but we will be doing that first cab off the rank. We have, in recent days, actually, we've spoken with the minister directly about releasing the land, or having the department release the land, because it's my understanding that it's at the department at the present time. So it's gone through quite a number of hoops to be cleared, but we are waiting for the administrative processes to take their place. So, yeah, and as I said, we're all very keen, council's very keen and supportive of the project. We realise, we recognise the economic benefit to Mount Isa, and we also think it's great for the livability of the city and the ongoing sort of vibrancy of the city to have a project like that here, have a facility like that here, so... Yeah, I hope that's answered your question.
I suppose part of the question is timeframe on that. I know we would sit there and say, how long's a piece of string? But I propose there is a large majority of people out there who are adult, who would like to know some sort of timeframe that we may see a land lease sign, the either an environmental impact study, which I suppose would be a part of the framework that you've got to fulfil as far as government requirements go. Yeah, and when we might see that the people will be carried out.
Just through the chair, yeah, there has been a pre-feasibility done, a pre-impact statement done, carried out by the landowner or the landholder. And they have agreed to release the land based on that to the council, so that part of it's been done. It seems to me it is just administrative processes that we need to go through, and we are waiting for that, and we're eagerly awaiting it as well. So, and we understand the demand of the community to have that facility up, and we certainly want that to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. And I guess to further on to what the deputy mayor said, I am sort of raising it with any minister who comes to Mount Isa, and I think, and I mentioned that we're sort of loosely discussing maybe going to Brisbane and going to parliament and presenting, and having the motorsport complex as part of our presentation of another iconic event to happen in Mount Isa. So we're definitely, as the deputy mayor said, very keen to get this project online, and I believe it's sitting with the DNRME at the moment. So as soon as we get that land given over, I think the deputy mayor is then gonna get a committee going, so... Hopefully that answers all your questions on that one.
Good morning, councillors, mayor, deputy mayor, and CEO. My name's Brian Adamson. My question to the council is that since Monday, I have been ringing the council twice. My partner rang it twice on Monday. We rang on Tuesday, we rang twice, and yesterday we rang twice, to find out about the fun park. Now, I'm trying to get a birthday party for my daughter on the fifth, to go and have a birthday party. And all I get from the council front desk is that, somebody will ring you, because they're not in the office at the moment, and we've had no word at all. No feedback, no thing to say. Look, we cannot get you an answer, no nothing.
Brian, I wasn't aware you had to have permission to host a party.
Well, it's going to be under renovation. We don't know when it's going to be closed. Because it was closed a few weeks ago, you know, a couple of weeks ago it was closed. And we don't know when it's going to be closed again.
Okay.
So we're just trying to find out.
Through you, madam mayor. Are you referring to the Monday it was closed? It was a public holiday?
No, it was on a weekend.
I'm only aware of it being closed once, which was over a long weekend, and that occurred because a person was acting up in a role and wasn't aware that they were meant to go and open it. So that's since been rectified. I'm under the impression to, I'm happy to follow up and see if you can book, but I'm also aware of people simply just turning up and marking out where they're going.
Yeah, well, I was going to close, but then, like, we're just trying to find out where that date. And we just don't get my...
Okay, so through you, madam mayor. Director Wallace, are you aware of any issues with the booking or the opening?
I'm just disappointed because, I mean, you ring up and ask for questions, and you get told, we'll ring you back if you make your case.
Yeah, so I guess there's two things to this, what you're bringing up is, one, just communication from council hasn't been very good. And the second one is, you know, sort of getting validation that the fun park will be in fact open so you can organise a party. Yep.
And we'll follow up the customer service.
We'll follow up on the customer service. Do we have an after-hours number? So if you turned up at the fun park, there's someone you could ring to say, why isn't it open?
Yes, there is an after-hours number, and that would go directly through. So that goes, instead of leaving a message as it was in the past, when you ring up now, you'll be directly connected to a person who will take down those details, and we have a hierarchy of people that respond to everything that goes through.
Yes, so that could be, that could be an option too. Okay, so if there's no more questions from the public, I'd just like to read out item four. Put my glasses on. CEO is cutting me off. Item four, which is the conflict of interest. Councillors are invited to declare any interest in relation to the agenda, including any late items presented. Councillor interests are noted against the relevant items by the minutes clerk for action during the meeting. Do we have anyone with any conflicts?
No.
No.
Thank you. So this takes us to item five, which is presentations. And this is probably the best part of the job, when the councillors get to give out the community grants. So shall we start with... Yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks, madam mayor. So just got the announcements have been made, but the people in presenting today, we've had Mount Isa Pistol Club, Mark Strains is secretary, amount of $4,750. And this project is to repaint the pistol club range number three in preparation for the Northern Region IWSF titles in June, and the Queensland State Black Powder Championships in August.
Thank you. We'll get Mark to come up into the middle. It's on, I can hear it.
Yeah, hi. The pistol club's been in Mount Isa for about fifty-five years now, has been established. Many years ago, we had lots of people and lots of volunteers did things for it. Nowadays, we're people, we've got about eighty members at the moment, but less of them do volunteer work for us. So these grants mean a lot to us. They're bringing the club up to date. We also, you know, the grants help us update our facilities. We had our third grant from the council. But we've also updated our firearms, to teach people to shoot properly. So we're not a bunch of cowboys. We actually do things properly up there and try to keep it real. We also try to give back to the community. Two weeks ago, we had a charity event up there raising money for the, helping Tom raise money for palliative care beds. And we donate our time to make that happen. And I think last year, surprisingly, with all the Covid stuff last year, we actually had a little bit of excess money which we donated to the RTX. This is very much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mark. Thank you.
Okay, we have Paws, Hoofs and Claws, Sue Carson, so for the PHC Operation Desex, $5,000, and that's to provide an annual education and desexing program to low-income earners.
Thank you. And Sue's not available today, but we'll make sure we get that check to her, and I'm sure they'll be very, very grateful for it.
Okay, thank you. Next off the list, we have the Isa Ski and Powerboat Club, Maguido Pittis, $2,000. That's for purchase of the club area maintenance equipment, for the purchase of eco-friendly landcare equipment to maintain the club area at Lake Mundara.
Yeah, g'day. I'm down from the ski club. We've been around since the mid-seventies sort of thing, over the years. Basically, we would have skied on the lake, but on the bank, we try and provide a night area to actually ski and go out there and have an afternoon thing. And this ranch will help us. We have a tough environment, please, with the waterfall. We basically call it my pain, however it was, pretty well. There's been a lot of members over the years, and not me. There's just about ten members that get out there. Eco-friendly, but that's people's care.
All right, good luck. Thank you so much.
Okay, next off, we have the Happy Valley Community Kindergarten. Danielle Diamond, I believe, is here, the maintenance officer. $1,947 for the purchase of new outdoor maintenance equipment to replace garden equipment that is at the end of life.
And Happy Valley aren't available for the kids. But I am sure they are very grateful for the grant from Manoisa City Council.
Thank you, madam mayor. So the final one today is the Isa Highlanders Dance Association. $4,279 for the upgrading of security at the Isa Highland Dance Hall to install motion sensors and security at the dance hall.
Good morning, all. My name's Leonie Winks. I'm the secretary of Isa Highlanders. Isa Highlanders has been running in Mount Isa for over thirty years now. We recently took out a lease at Six Wellington Row, which is over near the netball courts, to have our own hall finally, after all these years. And we're just sort of trying to upgrade the security a little bit. Unfortunately, we've been broken into three times in the last three months. So, anyway, that's something else. But we're very grateful for this to help us build up our hall and hopefully continue going on. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd just like to congratulate those people who got the microphone and spoke, because I know how daunting that is, and we certainly have a bigger crowd than normal. So you spoke very well, and as a councillor, it's really good to hear what's happening in these clubs and how, you know, that small amount of funding is really helping. So I'd just like to, we started with a prayer from the deputy mayor, but it, you know, as good as it was, we now have a member of the clergy available to do a prayer, so thank you so much for coming along.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Reverend John Feta from St Andrew United Church in Mount Isa. Later, we'll come together, bow our head, and we start with prayer this morning. Father God, we thank you for today. You call us here because You call us to lead and guide Your city of Mount Isa. And You, Lord God, a good shepherd. And You call the mayor and her councillors to be the good shepherd for the flock of Mount Isa. Lord, we pray this morning that You bless them, give them the knowledge, wisdom, so they can lead and guide the people of Mount Isa. Lord, we pray that You encourage them, empower them, so they do what they have to do for the good of their people of Mount Isa. We pray that You bless them abundantly for what they're doing. We had this morning, Lord, what they did for all our community, Lord. And that is our prayer, for them, that You bless them to continue to do what You called them to do. And Lord, as a good shepherd, they know the name of their sheep, their flock. In their flock, they know the voice of the shepherd. Lord, we pray and uplift each and every one of them for us to live here in the beautiful city of Mount Isa, for the good people, good shepherd, who lead us according to Your will. Lord, we pray that You forgive us for what we have done wrong. We're still a human being, Lord. But we praise God that we have God like You, that You always forgive us and uplifted us and guided us in the right direction, because You are the good shepherd, and You call us to be a good shepherd to our city and the people of Mount Isa. Lord, continue to be with us to do what You call us to do. Lord, we pray that You bless the mayor abundantly and all the councillors over here, Lord. Lord, and this is our prayer, in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. That was very good. All right, thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll continue on. So that takes us to item six. And would someone like to move the officer's recommendation for the previous minutes of the ordinary meeting?
Oh, move, madam mayor. Thank you.
I'll move the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 28th of April 2021, as received, be confirmed.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, can I get someone to second that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, Councillor McCray. All those in favour? And that's carried. That then takes us, we have nil reports for item seven, so that takes us to, which was the development in land use. And that takes us to item eight, which is works in construction, and that's Councillor Mick Tully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 8.1, the Engineering Services Monthly Report. I'd like to, with the officer's recommendation, that council receive and accepts the April 2021 Engineering Services Monthly Report.
Thank you, Councillor Tully. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, Councillor Fortune. Councillor Tully, would anyone like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. There's just a, there's a few things there, but I think the main, the main one that we've sort of got a lot of interest in is the smart meters, which will be, there's a late item in today's meeting, which we will the tender evaluation and the officer's recommendation, so I think that's something to look forward to in the next four to five months. Hopefully, it should be installed by December, once, once the motion is passed. Thank you.
That is good news. Councillor Fortune, would you like to comment on this one?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yep, thank you.
I'd just like to ask about, there's three projects on this, but there's, the completion date's supposed to be September 21. And that's the Pamela Dyton Isa Street intersection redevelopment, Pamela Trainer Street intersection, and then also Traversway Sunset Drive. They're saying that it'll be completed by 20, September 21. Are we on track for that?
Through Madam Mayor, I'll go to Director Smith.
Can we just get a microphone, too?
They've got one.
Oh, good, yep.
We're just deciding here. Thanks, Madam Mayor. Pamela Dyton Isa, where, I think it's fair to say, having difficulties around the service location and the escalating cost of that. So we're about to undertake a design review on that project. It's also the subject of TMR funding as well. So I'd be reasonably confident in saying that won't be delivered by that date. Pamela Tray, I'm sorry. So what was the third one you mentioned there? Yeah, okay. Pamela Trainer, I'm not too sure. Sunset, we just have a, we're reviewing one element of the design in one corner relating to truck movement. That is a far simpler exercise, although I think we may still, from a construction point of view, but we may still struggle for September on that. So I think it's a fair question.
Thank you. Is there any other comments on that one? No? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item 8.2. Councillor Tully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 8.2 is the Civic Centre Remedial Works Update. And I'd like to propose that the council receive and note the Civic Centre Remedial Works Update.
Thank you, Councillor Tully. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Molly.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Tully, would you like to talk on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, just, the major things are all complete now. There's just a few minor items that should be done in the next couple of weeks. We've already had two performances there, two Blue performances, which I was unable to attend. But from all reports, it, the small work should be completed. There was a few issues with the solve it. But yeah, it should be right to go in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Tully. Any other comments on this one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I concur with Councillor Tully, those comments. It is great to see it back in action and open again, so that's taken care of.
And I think we're getting a photo this afternoon, is that right?
Yeah.
1.30.
Opening, yes, good, good news. And that takes us to, oh.
Sorry. Through Madam Mayor, Councillor Tully, are you still requiring an update on the Civic Centre to each council meeting? That was the original resolution. I'm just wondering if you want, given the last things left, the toilets and the vanity units, whether you still want those reports coming through?
Yeah, thank you, CEO David. Well, I think probably at this stage, I've reached out to Bernard, and she, he has informed me of a few things that, like I've explained it, so yeah, I mean, I think it should be okay from now.
Thank you. So there's no more questions? All those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to 8.3, Contract for the Supply and Laying of Asphalt, and that's back to Councillor Tully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 8.3, the contract for the supply of laying of asphalt. I'd like to have the officer's recommendation that council engage Fulton Hogan Industries Pty Ltd. under contract 2021-10IS Asphalt Works for the value of $482,079.53, excluding GST.
Thank you, Councillor Tully. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Stratten.
Thank you, Councillor Stratten. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of that motion?
There was, there was an issue here with the, well, not an issue, but the evaluation, there was a, I think this was the one that the, so I might just need to just go to Bernard and regard this, or was this the one that I was? No, it was the other one. Sorry, so yeah, no, there was no issues with this one at all. Sorry, thank you.
No, that's fine. Anybody else would like to comment on this one?
Oh, yes, through the chair. I noticed here that it says what roads are included in this package. As a member of the public, how does a member of the public, they feel that their road is not up to standard? Is there a process they need to go through with council to report that?
Through Madam Mayor, we just, and I'll hand over to Director of Operations, we just went through a budget consultation process. That is a really good opportunity for people to nominate roads that they would like upgraded, because we included the Capital Works Programme in that. So that's one option. A second option is to simply write into council. But obviously, that first option I spoke about is the most logical one to do, because we just went through a whole budget consultation process. But I'll, I'll hand over to Director, interim Director of Operations, Bernard.
No, thanks. Look, I think that's a fair assessment. The CEO has just given ultimately, in terms of the asphalt and the bitumen, it comes down to a technical assessment of the surface and the pavement, but certainly residents just contact us, and we'll make an assessment to see whether it needs to go on the following years' programme.
We've done media on that, so people know that that's what they do?
Through Madam Mayor, on the draft budget, we did extensive.
No, on, if they feel their roads aren't, aren't good or are scrap. Some people might even know what to do, that's all. I'm just wondering if we have done any media, or could we do, could that be put down in the future?
Okay, so through Madam Mayor, if we put it down now, we've identified the councillors can change the draft budget this afternoon. That's what we've got booked in. So.
Happy with the budget.
So the, the option is to encourage people to put in. This Friday, there is an opportunity there with councillors who are having a couple with the councillors at the library. So anything that can be picked up there can be fed back into the process itself. People can, as the gentleman over here has, write a letter in at any time, or come and ask to speak to council about their roads. Well, you can certainly go through any of our social media platforms, and any of our emails as well. Yes, Bernard?
Just, just for the information of council, in terms of the timing of the works, the recommended tenderer did originally indicate they could complete the works by the end of June. They've now advised it will be by the end of July. However, that is no sooner than the other tenderer. So it does not impact on the recommendation, but I just wanted to be clear that the report indicated it would be undertaken by the 30th of June, but that has since changed. It will be about a month later.
Thank you, Bernard.
Yes, sorry, through the chair. Bernard, will that have any impact on the funding?
No, it just means we'll have to carry the funds forward in the next 24 years. But no, it doesn't.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Through the chair, yeah, I was just interested in the, the amount of work being done on Mundara Drive, which is one of the roads being done under that package. If you could just give us an outline, perhaps the length and which part of it?
Okay, councillors will be aware of the works which have previously been undertaken in Mundara Drive. It's principally around, so the undulations, the roughness, and the remaining section, well, there were, there were two projects within Mundara. The remaining section commences, if you're heading out, about 300 metres on the far side of the booster pump station, for a length of a kilometre. That is the remaining bit which is relatively rough. The balance of it probably needs a reseal soon, but doesn't require the asphalt to smooth it out, if I can put it simply. The other proposed location is the Mundara Drive and Ryan Road intersection. It obviously gets a lot of traffic. It gets a lot of heavy vehicle, V-doubles, V-triples, coming off the highway while entering that industrial area. So there will be, that'll be milled and asphalted, which will significantly improve that intersection.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other queries or comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item 8.4, which is the Contract for Provision of Bitumen Resurfacing. Councillor Tully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 8.4, we go with the officer's recommendation that council engage Cope and Construction Pty Ltd. under contract 2021-11IS Bitumen Resurfacing Works, City Streets for the value of $388,179, excluding GST.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councillor Fortune. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of that motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the tender evaluation, there was a cheaper option from RPQ Spray Steel, by about $70,000. But they weren't able to, to deliver the works in our timeframe. So we've gone with the Copper Constructions, which is a 388, because they will, already have sort of, they've already been booked in to do some resealing on the Gunpowder Road, so that works will be delivered in our timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Tully. Any other comments on this one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to, as a follow-on from the previous motions, discussions around the selection process, through our budget, where the councillors get a view of the proposed resurfacing and roadworks. There's also, as mentioned before, the opportunity for members of the public to come forward with their recommendations, too, on streets that are getting older and more worn. And there's a process that's gone through their categorization process, to identify the roads that are in greatest need. I've fielded questions myself from members of the public around that issue. They believe their street is worse than any other street, but there are a lot of roads around Mount Isa and the surrounding district that need attention, and those are categorized. And just for the information of the public, those categories are selected and then poked through to the budget process that the councillors have a look at. So, and we'll be going through that process very soon.
Definitely. Thank, thank you, Councillor Fortune. Any other comments on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so that takes us now to item nine, which is beautification, parks, gardens and youth, and that's Councillor Kim Coghlan.
Just read out the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts the April 2021 Parks and Gardens Monthly Report.
Thank you, Councillor Coghlan. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Ah, thank you, Councillor McCray. You were very quick off the mark this time. Councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yes, I will. It's with a bit of regret that I have heard through members of the public that with the Markham Valley upgrade, that we've had some trees stolen from there. Is that correct, through the chair? I've only had members of the public say it to me.
So through, through Madam Mayor, yes, that is correct.
Yep. Do we know how many, or how much it's going to cost to replace?
Yes, we're aware of that.
You're aware, okay. Well, a bit disappointing for members of the public when we're trying to beautify the city and this happens, so. The other thing I'd like to ask through the, the chair is, I've been approached by a group of ladies that go every week to the parks around Mount Isa, and what cleaning schedule? They don't believe there's a cleaning schedule for the play equipment at Ron McCulloch Park, Quota Park and Playway Park. It seems that it's only cleaned every fortnight. I know it used to be cleaned Monday, Wednesday and Friday, but I don't know with staffing issues if it's cleaned three times a week again, or is it going back to once a fortnight? If someone could help me out on that.
So through you, Madam Mayor, we'll come back to the councillor on that, because I'm looking at the director and she doesn't, we don't know the maintenance schedule off the top.
Yep, okay. Yep, because I do know that used to be done three times a week. And also, one thing that council, I haven't had anything back from council, is with regards to us replacing the Zonta Rose Garden along the Marion Street that was taken out when TMR did all the upgrades. It was up to council to put it back in. I have brought this up before.
Through you, Madam Mayor. We'll need to come back to you on that one.
Okay, righty-o. Thank you for that. And just, yeah, things have slowed down because it's winter, not as much mowing, but yeah.
Thank you, Councillor Coghlan. Would anyone else like to comment on this motion? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. So this takes us through to item 10, which is tourism, events, sport and recreation and library. So, and that's Councillor Peter McCray.
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the April 2021 Library Monthly Report.
Thank you, Councillor McCray. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Stratten.
Thank you, Councillor Stratten. Councillor McCray, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
I would. Just reading through the report, it's great to see that all the activities are sort of hitting the level of pre-COVID time, a lot more visitation. So, so that's really great. It's also good to see the school holidays activities that happened over the Easter break, with the robotics and the different STEM activities. And it'd be really good if we could find out if they're planning to do those again, June-July holiday, so we could really advertise that beforehand and speak to it before it actually happens. And it looks like it's pretty full now, but it'd be good to get the word out as well.
Definitely. Would anyone else like to speak on behalf of this one?
I'd just like to mention that on Welcoming Babies Day, all the play equipment was from a town library. So, and I believe we hire it out. So I know the kids were, yeah, some of it.
Yes, there is a full toy library over there. So you are able to go to the library. There's not only books these days. There's, you know, a whole range of things, down to magazines, toys, something for everybody.
So the kids were having an absolute ball, and there was such a good range of toys. So that was just a good reminder to the community that the library is there and has got a lot of stock. All right, so no more comments? All those in favour? And that's carried. And this takes us through to 10.2, which is Tourism Events Monthly Report.
I'd like to move that the council receives and accepts the April 2021 Tourism and Events Monthly Report.
Thank you, Councillor McCray. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Oh, Councillor Tully was too quick that time. Thank you, Councillor Tully. Councillor McCray, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
I would. I'd just like to really congratulate the staff. There's been a few events on recently with the Are You Lonesome Tonight, Queensland Opera Event, Anzac Day, and obviously Welcoming Babies Day on Sunday. I'd like to congratulate everyone on the good turnout. They got along on Sunday. I wasn't able to attend because I was sick. I didn't want to be around the babies, but I understand there were about 600 people there, and you would know, having to have photos with everyone, there would have been quite a line for that. So congratulations to everybody involved.
Thank, thank you. Would anyone else like to comment?
Through the chair, Madam Mayor, I attended the Queensland Opera on 18th May. It was a very entertaining evening. Very talented artists performing, and I believe that there's a lot of good, positive community feedback to that. It was a great night with a great lineup, I suppose. The, the mixture of opera and country and western is a little bit odd, but they really worked it in really well. And it was a great range of, of opera and, and the talents, I suppose, of the people involved. It was a very entertaining night.
Thank you, Councillor Fortune. And myself and the Deputy Mayor were in Richmond when it was on, but I, I've only heard positive feedback and actually, you know, a real tribute to council for its involvement, because it was such a good event, so it's great to hear. If there's no other comment, Councillor Tully?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to congratulate Councillor McCray. The Legends of League is on this weekend, and she's done a great job. She obviously forgot about it, but.
Thank you, Councillor Tully.
So that's on this weekend, so if you want to see a politician. So that's on this weekend. So if you want to see a politician, uh, Robbie Catter and a councillor, Mick Tully, get flattened, come down and watch the game.
I'll be there.
I have a feeling there'll be a good attendance. Thank you. All right, if there's no other comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item ten point three, which is the twenty twenty twenty-one Mount Isa rodeo. And it's a sponsorship application for at Buchanan Park.
Um, I'd like to move that councillor proves sponsorship in the amount of sixty thousand dollars cash plus GST to be a presenting partner in the twenty twenty-one Isa rodeo at Buchanan Park, subject to the conditions listed number one to seven.
Thank you. Um, can I get a second for this motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Um, I think we all understand how important rodeo is to our town. It brings a lot of visitors and a lot of, um, money in. Mount Isa has always, um, supported rodeo, um, not necessarily only in cash, in the past also in, in kind, which is hard to place a value on. So I think this is great if we just straighten this up, make it a purely cash donate, donation, and then everything's a lot more transparent for everybody.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Is there any other comments on this?
Yeah, through the chair, I won't be supporting this motion. Um, I just believe it's, rodeo's changed so much. It's Brisbane-based now. And I don't believe that our ratepayers' money should be going towards something that's being run out of Brisbane. Um, I have made my, uh, points to the other major sponsors of this event. It's been running Mount Isa for fifty-odd years from Mount Isa, but all of a sudden it seems to be run from Brisbane. Um, just doesn't sit right with me, so I won't be supporting it and like it noted too, please.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Is there any other comments on, on this motion?
Yeah, I just, sorry, um, um, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, I mean, I, I have my reservations about a few things, but I think the conditions that we have placed on this year's sponsorship, um, will be important with the financials and all, all that because in the past, these haven't been presented in, in a timely manner. And the sponsorship was just put in ad hoc and I think it was done a lot cleaner. And I think with the conditions that, um, we have proposed for the sponsorship, I, I think it'll be a lot transparent and I think it is a good option. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tully.
Uh, yeah, through the chair, Madam Mayor. Um, I, look, I'll be supporting the application for the reasons that councillor McCrae and councillor Tully have outlined. Um, I have raised exactly what councillor Coghlan has talked about and, and I think we've done that in a forum around the, uh, decision-making being made out of town. However, that, I note they've taken that on board and they've addressed that, um, as much as they can. They actually held the launch here in Mount Isa recently, which we went to, which was a great event. Um, and I think they are making concentrated efforts to ensure that the Mount Isa public are engaged. Um, the other thing I'd just like to note is that, uh, the, this is the year following COVID. They didn't have an event last year except for the, um, virtual rodeo. I think it's a pretty important that we get in behind this and support it and, and get it back on the, back on the radar again around the country. Um, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
You know, um, I will be supporting the motion, simply the fact that I think, um, the ratepayers of the city built the stadium, still continue to pump money into the stadium, and to me, that is the sponsorship of the town towards rodeo.
Thank you councillor Stratten. Uh, like the deputy mayor said, the rodeo did come to see council and they gave us an opportunity to give them some feedback. And I, and, and I thought that the councillors did put a few good, um, you know, concerns across and they, they definitely wrote it down. And, and even to the fact, I think I even mentioned to ensure that the rodeo queens kept the, kept the money they raised local, you know, things like that, that, that you sort of hear in the community. So it was good to have that opportunity to give feedback. Is anyone else got any comments? Would you like me to, um, do a division for this vote? Which is, we record who, who, for and again?
So, sorry, through Madam Mayor, there's two different ways of doing this. Um, councillor Coghlan's indicated she wants her vote noted, which is different to a division. Um, councillor Stratten hasn't actually said one way or the other at this point in time. Normally, normally what you would do is you would put the vote.
Yep.
Um, and it may be that councillor Coghlan says she wants her vote noted. It may be that councillor Stratten says that or not. It may be that another councillor turns around and calls a division. Uh, when calling a division, it simply, it simply records the name of each councillor and how they voted. So you will either have a situation where you will ask for one, potentially two, or who knows how many others.
Okay.
Or you actually call a division, so it's noted the way everyone voted.
Okay, so with that in mind, I, I won't call a division, I'll call a vote and then we can go from there. All right, all those in favour? And that's, um, does anyone want the vote recorded besides?
Yeah, against, and I have my vote recorded, please.
Thanks.
Yep, okay, thank you. And that's carried. And then that takes us to item ten point four, which is the RFDS aeroplane monument update.
Um, I'd like to move that council receives and note the RFDS monument update following the community consultation held on the twenty-fifth of March twenty twenty-one.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Stratten.
Thank you councillor Stratten. Um, councillor McCrae, would you like to, um, talk on, on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, I sure can. We, um, got a very good turnout, um, to the RFDS plane, um, community consultation. I think there were about between twenty and thirty people along and, um, very passionate on both sides. Um, because there was so much interest, we're exploring that further to see how much it will actually cost just to store the plane for, um, to get funding if we are to keep it. Also to, um, revisit the quote, to see how much it is actually going to cost if we were to restore it ourselves and then to, um, make the decision down the track.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Would anyone else want to speak on this one?
Through the chair, I will be, um, supporting that we receive the, um, update, but, um, I really don't agree with it. I think we should be working with Cloncurry, um, council in getting the plane to Cloncurry, um, to its proper birthplace. And, um, that we should be working with them to gain funding, to help them move it, restore it, then they can get funding to restore it themselves.
Through the chair councillor Coghlan, I guess we all can have our own opinions on that, but we do need to listen to, um, what the community want when we hold community consultation. I guess that's the whole purpose of it.
I understand that, but sixteen people and there's about two thousand voters, so.
Anyone else like to comment on this one?
No, uh, so through the chair, this issue came up in, in the last term and, um, we agreed that it was to go to Cloncurry, I think just informally, and then Cloncurry wanted Mount Isa to pay for the removal and transport, which I think, um, we weren't happy to continue. And then that, I think that's when the talks, um, ceased. That's just a bit of background on this. Thank you.
And, and I, I've since talked to the mayor of Cloncurry, Greg Campbell, and he said that they actually did have money in the budget to, you know, take it down and move it to Cloncurry, but then they've since have taken it out of the budget. So it's not that they don't want to, it's just not in their budget.
Thank you.
Or ours.
Or our budget either. It's not in our budget as well for, for us to, um.
Through the chair. Yeah, just have a couple of comments. Um, it is a, uh, a, a subject that's close to heart of a lot of people. There are a lot of people that do want it to actually go to Cloncurry, including people that were involved in the, in the, um, the reconstruction of the original unit. But, um, and strategically it probably would be a good move because already our tourism stuff's fairly confusing. And, um, to add, or continue to add, the RFDS is a, is a, is another major one is, is, um, in my view, not, not really concentrating our, our resources. However, as councillor McCrae said, the, uh, the great bulk of opinion seems to be, um, for it to remain in Mount Isa and be, and be, um, uh, restored and placed appropriately. Um, so I'd just, just add for that part of it, um, the, um, uh, the RFDS themselves are very, very interested in, in getting it restored and also in, um, the location, the eventual location of it, in which they don't have, really have an opinion about at this present time. Uh, but I do note that they are building a new, or wanting to build a new hangar at the airport. And, um, that may come along with a visitor's centre out there and it's possibly a, um, a good location for, um, this, this, um, um, display when it's, when it's completed. Uh, so I'm, I'm thinking that, uh, there's a lot of, uh, opportunity here for it to be done properly and for it to be looked after in, in, um, in the eventual, uh, long term. Because, uh, I think one of the risks we do have is if we do restore it again now, that it'll, it'll fall into the same state again as it's, and, and be landed on council again with what we've already had, um, happen to us now. So, um, and that's why we're here. But, uh, yeah, so hopefully the, those sort of things can be taken into account when the, um, restoration and the location is done. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, through the chair, I have just a, a comment on the, um, initial discussions around the RFDS plane in the George McCoy Park. The initial discussions are revolved around the safety to the community because of the age of the structure and the, the risk of, uh, parts falling off the plane. Uh, that's where the discussion started and, um, it moved on from there. And, um, at, at this point in time, there's, is still that risk to the community, um, to, uh, council and the community. So, um, uh, the, uh, the ongoing is, it still have to be sorted out. And I would, uh, agree with deputy mayor, uh, councillor Barwick about the, um, opportunity for RFDS to take it, uh, on board. Um, and possibly in their budget, uh, around the, the new, uh, centre out at the airport, where it can be put in a place where it can be, um, maintained and, um, and preserved for, uh, you know, uh, RFDS, which is, um, the, uh, the organisation that, um, uh, not owns the plane, but, um, would be very much suited to displaying the plane.
Thank you councillor Fortune. And I think the one thing I got out of that community consultation was that the community was saying, hey, give us an opportunity to get some volunteers together and raise some funds and see if we can help you keep the plane in Mount Isa. So I'm certainly putting it out there to the community that if they do want to sort of see that, want the plane to stay in Mount Isa, we do need to rally together as, not just the council, but as, as a community to keep the plane here.
So if there's no more further comments, um, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to late item one, which is Gallipoli Park Pump Track and Recreation Development Design and Construct Tender Number RFT slash twenty twenty-one dash oh seven.
Um, I'd like to move that council award the design and construction tender RFT slash twenty twenty-one oh seven IS for the Gallipoli Park Pump Track and Recreation Development to Transgate Constructions for the sum of one million, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, including GST. And that council increase the total project budget to one million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand and twenty-one dollars and seventy-two cents, including GST.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Stratten.
Thank you councillor Stratten. Uh, councillor McCrae, would you like to, uh, speak on behalf of that motion?
Um, I would. The, the pump track obviously, um, is going to cost more than the initial grant that we received for eight hundred and ninety-five thousand. But I will note that initially, um, the project was a little bit different. It was the pump track and basketball courts. That has been switched out and turned into a much bigger project with a little learn-to-ride track, exercise equipment, barbecue areas. Um, I think once a project is finished, it's going to, um, be an excellent facility for the whole community and particularly people on, over in that Soldier's Hill area that don't really have much else over there. So I'm really happy to support this motion.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this motion?
Yeah, I'd just like to, um, this is long overdue. Um, uh, for parks in Mount Isa, this sort of thing goes a long way to make the livability in our city a great place to live and play. So I think this is a great project.
Thank you.
Yeah, through the chair, I support, um, all that, um, has been said about it. The Gallipoli Park is a huge public space in Mount Isa. Um, uh, you know, it's long past its due date to, uh, get a, an upgrade like this, uh, which will be, um, utilised by the whole community. And, um, uh, the, the changes obviously have come through on community consultation. We've listened to the community around, um, uh, what they would like to see in there. And, uh, I think we've taken a, a very good path, um, uh, a long way with the community consultation. And, um, the end result is, uh, going to be a, a great asset to Mount Isa.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Anybody else?
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just probably got one queries, not only with just this, uh, funding, but if someone can answer, maybe the CEO. With the funding milestones for the funding that we get, is there any allowance with materials through the COVID? Because materials are very, are getting very difficult to get and I was just wondering if there is.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Um, that's a really good point. We're not just finding that through these sorts of projects, but we're definitely finding that with the purchase of plant and the replacement of plant as well. What usually took three, three to four months is taking six to eight months at the moment. Um, we're hoping, uh, that, uh, that the contract can deliver. Uh, where they can't deliver, we'll go back to the funding authority. And they're usually pretty flexible in relation to issues associated with moving materials, um, to Mount Isa, especially if those materials are coming from overseas.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, I've found if you're sort of open and transparent with, you know, with funding bodies, I mean, they generally give you some leeway. Thank you.
Thank you. I know I for one can't wait for this project to be completed. Oops, sorry.
Oh, you're all right. Thanks, Madam Mayor. Now, I, look, I, I just wanted to note really that, uh, it's, it's a wonderful project. It's good to see it in another part of town away from the, the central areas, um, where we focused most of our attention over the, the last decades, I suppose. Um, and, uh, yeah, to activate such a big park like that, it's a great asset, Gallipoli Park. And I think to have this in there is, is, uh, really going to enhance that park for the local community and the Soldier's Hill area particularly.
Thank you.
Yep.
And like I said, I just can't wait for it to be completed because, um, I can't wait to take my kids there. So the, uh, the more, the more social and kid infrastructure we got, the better, as far as I'm concerned. Okay, so if, uh, there's no more questions on, uh, comments on this one, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, that takes us to item eleven, which is environmental management, and that's councillor Paul Stratten.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Through the chair, um, Water and Sewer Monthly Report for April. Council receives and accepts, uh, April twenty twenty-one Water and Sewer Monthly Report.
Thank you councillor Stratten. Can I get someone to second that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Councillor Stratten, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, just like to thank the public for being, um, quite patient with the, um, Water and Sewer team. At the moment, we're going through a big, uh, main replacement program. I'd just like to interrate that the Ki Mindi, how well they've accepted it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Stratten. Any more comments on this one?
Yeah, the public notification has been, um, pretty good. Um, getting close to excellent, I'd say. I, I see a lot of, uh, comment out there from the public and also, but, um, more so from Mount Isa Council's, uh, information through our Facebook about upcoming works and also, um, very, uh, um, like emergency reactions to as well, to, uh, water mains breaks. And, um, I think it's, uh, um, applaudable. Now, council's doing very well. I, I believe in the, um, with the public notifications around our long-term plans, but also the, the short-term emergencies.
Yep.
And, uh, it, uh, you know, just, uh, helps the community understand what's going on and I think it's a good thing.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, through the chair, um, uh, I just, I had a question just around, um, the, there's a couple of bores we have in parks. Um, and I can't really ascertain if they're actually working or not, um, or whether we're using the town water supply to water them. Um, but I have, um, uh, I, I mean, I live near one, um, in Sunset there, uh, which has a pretty complex, complex and, um, it's quite, quite a modern bore set up there with tanks and everything. So, but I'm not sure that it's operating and, and possibly we could use that to be saving water. Um, so I just asked that question. I know there are others, I think, too, as well.
Through you, uh, Madam Mayor, I might just go to the manager of Water and Sewer.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to check and get back to you on that. Uh, I've heard anecdotally that, uh, a couple of the bores were not being used in favour. But I can verify whether that's true or not. There are comments made passing. So I'll verify what bores are being used, what are not being, what are not being used, why they're not being used and speculating some.
Through Madam Mayor, we may bring that back to a strategy meeting so the councillors become aware.
Yeah, that'd be good. I think it's, um, with that infrastructure in place, it's important that we use it and, and sort of monitor it regularly, yeah. Um, I, I did have a quest, uh, just a statement about the, um, water meters, but I think we're, um, talking to that later on, aren't we?
Correct.
Yeah, thanks, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, all, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to eleven point two, which is Waste Management Monthly Report for April twenty twenty one.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Through the chair, officer's recommendations there is council receives and accepts the April twenty twenty one Waste Management Monthly Report.
Thank you, Council of Streton. Would anyone like to second that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you, Council McCrae. Council Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of that motion?
Yeah, still have a few truck issues there. They'll be ongoing till we get our new fleet and I'd just like to thank the public to be patient with that as well. Also, we have two major projects that have commenced at the beginning of April. One being the new waste transfer station and the new storage shed out at the waste management facility. So two great projects started there.
Thank you, Council of Streton. Would anyone else like to comment on this motion? Okay, all those in favour?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Can I just ask the councillor if he's doing anything next Monday night at five thirty?
I'll be here, David, thank you.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Are you able to explain what you'll be doing here?
Yes, we've got another community consultation on the MRF and I like to see as much public here as possible so we get a good, you know, concept of what people want out there.
Thank you, Council of Streton. I think that's an important statement because we only had one person in the public gallery and I do think that there was a lot of people who did have an opinion on social media so we really love to get them to either do our survey, send us some comments or come in and be part of that community consultation.
We can have, take it two ways really. Either people are really happy with the MRF going ahead as a recycling programme and no one's against it or yeah, it's good to see like, you know, if you get a lot of people in here going against it, well.
It's good to know.
Through you, Madam Mayor. That also influences the pickups and recycling bins, as I'm aware?
Yes, yes, it will. Very hot subject, Mr CEO, so if you want to voice your opinion, please come along.
Yeah, and I think what the CEO is getting at is that we currently have two pickups a week. So for us to recycle, which is very expensive, we're going to be looking at one pickup a week and a recycling bin every fortnight. So this is why it's really important we get some feedback from the community because it is it is quite a big change and I know there's a lot of people out there who want recycling but there's also a lot of people out there who want two bins.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no more comments, all those in favour, and that's carried. That takes us to item eleven point three, which is the Environmental Services Monthly Report for April twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The office and recommendation there is council receives and accepts the April twenty twenty one Environmental Services Monthly Report.
Thank you, Council of Streton. Can I get a second for that?
McCrae.
Thank you, Council McCrae. Council Streton, would you like to talk on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, just like the, there's an investigation of seven incidents relating to littering and illegal dumping still. To me, this is very disappointing coming from our local members of the public. You know, we all live here, you know, it doesn't make the place look good so just make to be aware if you are caught illegal dumping, you'll be dealt with very harshly. And also, I'd like, the biosecurity team has been out, seventy eight sites across Mount Isa treating thirty one active breeding sites for mosquitoes, regularly spraying invasive species has continued. And spray, and it's good to see the vector control officer being out there also spraying invasive plants in our community.
Well, thank you, Council of Streton. Do we have anyone else who'd like to comment on this motion?
Yeah, through the chair, could I have some sort of update like on Smelly Creek? I don't know what's the proper name is.
New Pump Station One?
Yep. It's still quite smelly and I think there's quite a big mosquito problem still there.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I don't know if the manager wishes to speak to that one?
Smelly Creek, Pump Station One.
Breakaway Creek.
Sorry, that's the unofficial name for it.
We've had a consultant have a look at that and then to get back to us with some pricing. That is the last pump station in the network so of course by the time all the sewage gets there, it's well aged and it's starting to get a little bit ripe which is why we have the problem. We've got some scrubbing in there, some biofilter which is basically a bark which tries to remove any odour. It's diverted through that to try and remove odour. There's also a, I can't really explain it, but a biological process in there which aims to generate some bugs which reduce the odour. It obviously has a great impact on it but it doesn't reduce it completely or eliminate it completely. The biggest problem is we're actually allowing the odour to form, then we're trying to dissipate it and filter it out and that. What we're looking at is moving up into the system and treating it before it becomes septic so that you won't have the odour issue at number one. So you don't see basically a chemical which stops the hydrogen sulfide forming in the first place and then it goes right through the system without generating the gases and that gets the treatment plant without annoying anybody.
And just while we're on it, why does that creek never dry up? It used to be dry and now it's not. So is it a natural spring or is there a leak because it's always running?
That was the subject of a report a couple of months ago and there was views from the consultant who did that. It was related to overwatering of lawns and that. This is up near Sunset Way. That's the one where you had a look at that day?
No, 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 this is back near Smelly Creek, near.
Rhine Road. Rhine Road.
The creek starts up in Sunset?
Yeah, I understand that but that Smelly Creek used to dry out and it hasn't dried out for years and it's getting larger.
That's because of the water, you just said that.
Can't explain that one. When we, it relates to smart meters, but when we're able to do a proper water balance, we'll see how much water is going where and what we're losing when we start to track it down. It's unlikely to be leakage through the town water supply but it's possible. So we will eventually solve that or understand where the water's going.
I was just, I was just going to say, we did have a workshop on this and that's what the outcome was that as soon as we get the smart meters roll out it'll give us a better understanding of our leaks so it's unfortunately, we're probably not going to know too much more until the end of the year.
Just as an add on to that too, Madam Mayor, through the chair, that there is a lot of runoff from the city from bore used to as well. I see it every day around where I live and it goes into a gutters, into the culverts and into Breakaway Creek which is just above the number one pump station. So there's reasons for that and if you have a look around at the runoffs through the stormwater systems around town, you'll see that there is runoff from the city through overwatering of gardens and runoff down the streets.
Thank you, Council of Fortune. Any other comments on?
Yeah, through the chair. Look, I thought, I think it's important that we distinguish that the water in the creek is not related at all to the sewage pump station. Number one, the water in the creeks from runoffs from around town it would appear or leakage of the main system. But the smell that's coming from the pump station number one is totally unrelated to that.
Thank you. And can I just ask Stephen a question? Do we have a timeline for what you're doing with number one pump station? Is that going to be sort of something it's going to take to the end of the year or is it a?
We can solve the problem by throwing lots and lots of money at it. The consultant will come back with a proposal. We'll go through that proposal and then try and optimise that and then see how it fits with money that has been allowed in the budget. I can't recall how much was put in there tentatively. Hopefully it's enough. If it is, then it's a lot easier. If it's not, then we've got to come back to a meeting with a more definitive proposal and ask for the money and debate it at that point.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Is there any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour, and that's carried. And that takes us to item eleven point four, which is the Local Laws Monthly Report for April twenty twenty one.
Officer's recommendation through the chair, council receives and accepts the April twenty twenty one Local Laws Monthly Report.
Thank you, Council of Streton. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, Council of Fortune. Council Streton, would you like?
Yeah, just like the, the council has received overwhelming support this month from rescue groups. In April, forty four dogs and sixteen cats have been collected by our rescue groups, thus giving these furry friends a wonderful chance at a new home. And just like that, this was a pretty hot topic there a while back, a couple of horses there. Rocket and Doopy were surrendered to Mount Isa City Council in a terrible, horrible state. It's good to see that someone has gladly taken on Doopy and Rocket and just like to thank the people in council that were looking after them because they have flourished in council's care.
That is a good news story. Thank you, Council of Streton. That is good to hear. Would anyone else like to comment on this motion? Okay, all those in favour, and that's carried. Okay, so this probably, we've probably taken some of the fund rate of this one but this is eleven point five, which is the supply and install of the smart meters.
Okay, long overdue. Officer's recommendation there is council award a contract for R F T two zero two zero dash eight I S Advanced Meeting Infrastructure Systems, the Sioux's Water Patrice Relitited for the sum of two million nine hundred and thirty thousand and ninety three cents excluding G S T and allocate an additional two hundred and fifty thousand to the project in the twenty one twenty two budget.
Thank you, Council of Streton.
Through you, Mr, Madam Mayor, it's, there's no sense there.
Oh, sorry, no.
There's no sense there either.
Thanks, Mr Tully.
Thank you, Council of Streton. Can I get a second for that motion?
Yeah, I just, this is.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Second.
Deputy Mayor beat you this time but Council Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Pino Gallery there. Just like the, this is long overdue. This is going to make tracking of water through the city, finding leaks easier and it's going to be a lot easier for our people on the ground as well. Won't have to go out and check the meters so often. So you're talking about savings in the long run there.
Thank you, Council of Streton. Any other comments with this one?
Yeah, I'm pretty excited for this project. I think it's going to be a bit of a game changer for people that have investment properties in the town that aren't necessarily around their property to notice any water leaks. So that will potentially stop huge water bills that are not the fault of the owners.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one?
Chair, thanks. Yeah, I concur with Council McCrae and Council of Streton's comments on this. It's a fantastic project. I think the residents will be very surprised and pleased when they see what they can actually do with the data that's coming from their their water usage and they'll give them a lot more feeling of control of, you know, how much water gets used. They'll be able to find leaks quickly as Council McCrae has said and I think it's, yeah, a boon for the town.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Also agree, as someone who's had a leak, I had to wait until I had a very, very green patch of lawn to realise that there was a leak there so this will be a game changer, I'm sure.
Sorry, just through the chair, one thing I did notice is well, I think we need to highlight the difference between the Sioux's static and the Sioux's mechanical because it's just interesting to note that one's very low and one's very high. I think people need to be aware of what the difference because that's really having two chops at the cherry when you look at a tendering process.
Thank you, Council Tully.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Did you want the manager to speak to that?
Yeah, just, well, I'd like to know and so the public understand what the difference is because it's the same company.
Ah, yeah, thank you.
The difference between the two meters, the mechanical meter is a traditional meter. All the meters that are in it in sort of the moment are mechanical meters and most of the tenders including the ones that weren't shortlisted, tender for mechanical meters. Two tenders tended for the static meter, for an electronic meter. One was an ultrasonic, the Sioux's one uses magnetic resonance, basically detects the water through disturbing a field. The difference is that the the electronic or static meter doesn't degrade over time. It will not wear. It will be accurate to within two percent day one, it'll be accurate to within two percent in fifteen years. The mechanical meters will not. They will wear and as they wear, it actually wears in the owner's favour. They read slower and slower. I know I did work many moons ago and I was at Yundi Water and they did some work and ten percent over ten to fifteen years is probably a reasonable estimate of how much they slow. Ours are well over ten years old, the existing meters, and when we talk about game changers from the day we install these, I'm expecting we'll probably get ten percent of that non-revenue water back simply because it's not being recorded. So the difference there with these static meters is that over time they pay us back. The mechanical meters bring us the same benefits but they don't give us any additional benefits. We'll gradually start to lose revenue again. These will actually maintain that revenue. In the assessment, we included a conservative two percent allowance for the well, it's additional revenue although the amount of revenue we don't lose but and that sways things major in favour of the static meter. If you use something like a ten percent, you wouldn't really need a meeting and a decision, it would be just so obvious but, you know, that that has to be proved. It will be proved but it's very hard to prove right now. So if you use a conservative two percent, it still shows that the static meter is easily the way to go and the way of the future. They have other advantages too because of the electronics but the real benefit is that we don't start to lose revenue again from day one when we install the new meters. Which has benefits for the customers as well because they remain accurate so there's less concerns, less debate about whether they're getting the right amount of water or whatever.
Thank you very much. Is there any other comments? Okay, all those in favour, and that's carried. This takes us to item twelve, which is the Corporate and Financial Services Economic Development Promotions and Development and this is Deputy Mayor, Councilor Phil Barwick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Twelve point one, I'll move that council receives and accepts the April two thousand and twenty one Customer Services Monthly Report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you, Councilor McCrae. Can I would you like to speak on behalf of this motion, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got the officer's report here. So we received over two thousand, two thousand one hundred and forty four telephone calls in April. So that's an average of a hundred and twelve per day. That really is the heartbeat of council. There's also dealing with walk up requests and inquiries and payments as well as all that. The cases that were logged for further action across the communications there were four hundred and thirty two during April and three hundred and seventeen of those were completed, logged as completed and closed and that's leaving us a hundred and fifteen cases open as at the thirtieth of April. So they were being continued to work on. So yeah, the only other thing I'd like to quickly mention is that our Camewell agent Cathy Green has resigned there and I'd just like to pass my thanks and I guess council's thanks to her for the period of time that she's been operating for us down there. So and she has been there as long as I've been involved with council so I presume she was there before that for some period of time. So just if I could express my thanks to her, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anyone else want to comment on this motion? All right, all those in favour, and that's carried. And that takes us to item twelve point two, which is the Corporate and Financial Services Monthly Report, April twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd move that council receives and accepts the April two thousand and twenty one Corporate and Financial Services Monthly Report.
Thank you. Can I get a second for this motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, Council of Fortune. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Sure, thank you. Sure, thank you. Um, okay, so year-to-date, uh, we have the table there for revenue and expenditure. Um, and it's looking very, very healthy at the moment. We're, um, coming into, uh, our operating revenue of, um, fifty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-six, um, thousand dollars, so it's fifty-eight million, sorry, uh, four hundred and forty-six thousand, so, um, which is, uh, getting close to our full-year budget. Um, we're, uh, year-to-date budget, we're actually over that by four percent, so we're at a hundred and four percent. Um, the operating expenses, um, are favourable to us again, they're, they're down a bit. Um, in, in some respects due to the, uh, the lower level of re- revenue that we're receiving. Um, but it's, we're sitting at ninety-two percent of what we budgeted for at the present time at this, this point in the year. Um, the, um, sorry, I'll just, this, uh, so we're not expected to, um, reach our final revenue total, but it's, it's getting closer now, so we're into May, uh, into May nearly. Um, so there's only one month to go on this financial year, but we're looking for a, uh, probably a very small deficit towards the end of the year, um, which is lower than we budgeted for in the beginning. Uh, we also have the, uh, table attached for the outstanding rates, um, which is of interest. Now, all the rates have been, uh, issued across the community, um, and we're sitting at, uh, twenty million, um, outstanding, uh, at the moment as an age receivables. Uh, I note that six million of that is, um, uh, over a hundred and eighty-one days. Uh, we, we are, at the present time, moving towards, uh, reigniting the, um, collections process, which has gone into a lull during the, the Covid, uh, period of last year. So, uh, that, we expect that to be taken, um, those things to be coming in a bit quicker, a bit quicker now. Uh, I think that's all for the moment. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Unless there's any questions?
Is there any other comments on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to, um, let's jump on, twelve point three, which is Promotions and Development Monthly Report, April twenty twenty one.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'll move that council receives and accepts the April two thousand and twenty-one Promotions and Development Monthly Report.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor McCrae. Would anyone, uh, Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
No, I think it's been, uh, quite a, a busy month, a business as usual. There's been a lot to promote, so it's, um, it, it's great to see that's all happening. We're, we're certainly getting out there in, um, in the online papers and the, uh, the social media. Um, I would like to just comment, um, that the, uh, I've just got a note here. Yeah, the budget consultation is now closed, and we're, we're going into, um, into, uh, briefing to have that ready for, for, um, June twenty-sixth, I think it is, um, it's somewhere around there anyway, um, so. Uh, but, but we had some responses from the community, which we've taken into account, and, uh, that's come through our promotions and development, um, exposure through that, uh, community consultation. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Would anyone else like to comment on this one? All right, all those in favour? That's carried. Takes us to twelve point four, which is twenty twenty-one twenty-two Debt Policy.
Okay. Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor. I'll move that council adopts the twenty twenty-one twenty-two debt policy applicable the first of July, two thousand and twenty-one, as presented.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Uh, Deputy Mayor, would you like to, um, comment on this motion?
Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, li- while I've moved the, um, the, uh, policy, I, I do have a, an issue or not, just I wanted to discuss for a minute, the, um, the item in there about, uh, that holds us to not taking out any more debt, uh, between twenty, I'm just trying to find the paragraph, between, uh, twenty twenty and twenty thirty. And, uh, I, I was just thinking that given that, uh, we do have quite a bit of infrastructure work coming up, uh, potentially with things like the water infrastructure, and, uh, yeah, potentially even housing development, uh, given what's happening in the city at the moment, that we, we might be constraining ourselves a little bit by having that written into the policy. So I, I might ask, um, uh, perhaps just through the C E O, if we can delete, um, the paragraph under dot point one, I think it is. That's on page one forty-six.
Sorry, through, through Madam Mayor, we've got no new borrowings twenty twenty-one. And then council will not be undertaking any additional bor- borrowings for the financial year twenty twenty to twenty thirty, and will fully fund its capital work programme from the government. So through you, uh, Madam Mayor, that's simply saying that that will get revised each time, every year we will go back. These policies need to come back, these three need to come back to council every year. So at the moment, if we were to start a process with, uh, Q T C, who manage our, uh, loans, we would have had to have indicated that probably about three months ago, Mr Acting Manager. No, so through you, Madam Mayor, it simply sets out the timeframes if you were intending to borrow. But we've had no indication from council to borrow, um, and the argument put forward by Q T C would be you have enough cash in the bank at the moment, unless what you're borrowing for is going to be significant and above and beyond what cash in the bank you have at this time, because their query would be, yes, it's a very good time to be borrowing, but have you fully realised your unrestricted cash position and cash position in the bank before going down that borrowing process? Then you need to go through the department and then through Q T C to actually take out those borrowings. I'm happy to be corrected by the Acting Manager. Yes, again, through you, Madam Mayor, um, I would highly advise council to only borrow for capital and not to borrow for operational. Um, that is one very clear recommendation that needs to be repeated.
Yeah, and that's, that's my understanding as well. Uh, I, I just know, I just point out that our, our borrowing level is, you know, quite low compared to a lot of councils. Um, so I, 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 it's not that I'm insistent on borrowing money, but, uh, I just saw that in the policy. If the policy's reviewed each year and we can adjust that, that's fine. Um, which we could have done now, but, uh, I, I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose that capacity to, to be able to borrow, particularly if we do, um, you know, we do assess in council that we need to spend a lot of capital on perhaps the water infrastructure and going forward, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more comments on this one? All those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item twelve point five, which is twenty twenty-one twenty-two Investment Policy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'll move that council adopts the twenty twenty-one twenty-two, uh, Investment Policy applicable, first of July, twenty twenty-one, as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a, sorry, thank you Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Um, Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
No, I think, uh, we, we've, um, you know, got considerable control over investments, and it's very, very conservative, and, uh, I'm happy with that policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if no one else, um, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item twelve point six, which is twenty twenty-one twenty-two Revenue Policy.
Getting smashed tonight, thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh, could I, uh, move that council adopts the twenty twenty-one twenty-two Revenue Policy applicable the first of July, twenty twenty-one, as presented?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Uh, Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of that?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, the revenue policy is, uh, needs to be updated, um, uh, each year, so it's prior to the budget being approved and, um, uh, outlines how, um, council manages its, uh, revenue streams, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else? Um, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so that takes us to item thirteen, which is Executive Services, which is the Chief Executive Officer David Keenan. Can I get someone to move the motion of the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts the April twenty twenty-one Council Decision Report? Thank you councillor McCrae. Can I get someone to second that motion?
Seconded, Barwick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of this, um, report? Motion. Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. The next item is thirteen point two, which is the Correspondence Report for April twenty twenty one. And can I get someone to move the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts the April twenty twenty one Correspondence Report?
Move, Barwick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Can I get someone to second that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Would anyone like to speak on, on behalf of this motion or to this motion? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. Uh, that's, takes us to item thirteen point three, which is Training and Development Strategy Policies Submission. And can I get someone to move that the officer's recommendation that council adopt the Training and Development Policy Version Five as presented?
Move, Barwick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Can I get someone to second that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of this or to this motion?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a, uh, new policy, I believe. Um, oh no, it's been recently updated, sorry. Uh, but it's, uh, it's an addition to our, um, human resources policy about how we manage, uh, training and development for the council staff. So very, very important component of, um, sustaining, um, uh, employment and our levels of employment here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Through the Chair, can I just ask, um, number three conferences, seminars and short courses? It says that, um, just the approval of the C E O is needed. Does that, does the C E O work with, like, the councillors on that one, or is it just your decision alone whether or not the staff member goes?
So through Madam Mayor, all, all applications to go to conferences or go to training or receive any short courses goes through the executive management team and is noted through the executive management team.
Councillors aren't, aren't, um,
Involved in.
Involved at all or asked an opinion?
Sorry, in arranging training for staff?
No, no, just on asking an opinion if, if it would be a valuable exercise to do.
Through you, Madam Mayor, no.
Okay, that's all.
Through, through Chair, Madam Mayor, it would be a, um, a budget, uh, consideration for councillors to take into consideration if, if the, um, operations, uh, through the C E O determine that there's a number of, uh, training courses that, um, our, our employees may need, and, um, that's where the councillors will get a opportunity to say yea or not to a, a possible budget for that.
Yep, thank you councillor Fortune. There's no more comments on that one. All those in favour? And that's carried. And this one takes us to item thirteen point four, which is the Submission of Motion to the L G A Q Annual Conference, and it's for a complaint fee. Um, the executive summary is, 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 should I read the, this one out? Yeah, so, um, this is, this is one where Mount Isa City Council is looking to put a motion through to the L G A Q Annual Conference. Um, and it's about the cost of investigating complaints, which is very high for, um, council. And we're proposing to formally submit a motion to the L G A Q in an attempt to lower these costs and reduce the number of complaints not made in good faith. Um, so can I get someone to move the motion, and this is the officer's recommendation, that council endorse the submission of a motion to the L G A Q Annual Conference twenty twenty-one regarding the introduction, application of a fee to lodge a complaint?
Moved.
Thank you councillor Tully. Can I get someone to second that motion?
Coghlan.
Thank you councillor Coglan, uh, Coghlan. Uh, councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, yeah, I, I fully support this. I, I think, um, it, it comes at a great cost for council for, um, complaints and that, you know, of nature that probably doesn't find, you know, to be positive. And just one question, the application fee here at, at two hundred dollars, is that the same application fee of the R T I as well? Okay, thank you.
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, I, I don't know if it's been C P I'd or indexed, but it's approximately that amount.
Thank you.
Um, through the Chair, I'd like to, um, just mention that I don't think the submission goes far enough. I'd like to see a component in there about, and, what I can't say, and not, anonymous complaints? Where you have someone anonymously putting in ten to fifteen complaints. Like, I don't think, um, it needs to be public knowledge, or the person with the complaint against them needs to know who put it in. But if council staff are investigating and they see the same persons putting in ten or fifteen vexatious complaints, then, um, I just don't think people, if they, they need to put their name to it if they want to make a complaint.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Does anyone else have a comment on this?
I, I guess, um, from my point of view, um, I understand exactly why this motion's been put forward. I do believe that, um, I'm not comfortable with the fee because I would hate for someone who was in financial difficulties not to put forward a complaint because of the, the two hundred dollars. And, uh, but I do understand that sometimes there are people who put, put through a lot of complaints and, and probably, probably my thoughts, it would be better to, um, tighten up the process to make sure that they have got witnesses and evidence, that it's not just hearsay or she said, he said sort of stuff. And, uh, so I guess for my part, I wouldn't like to see, um, a price tag on it. I would like to see more of, um, some substance within the complaint, so that if we are investigating, there is, there is something behind the investigation, whereas I feel that if you put two hundred dollars on it, um, or any monetary value, we'll miss out on, on people actually complaining about something that actually needs to be complained about.
Through the Chair, could it not be a case that if the complaint turns out to be valid, that they get the money refunded? And that will also stop people putting in like fifteen vexatious complaints if they have to cough up two hundred dollars for each one that they know is invalid?
Through the Chair, I agree totally with councillor McCrae. People need to put money where their mouth is, and if they want to put in a complaint, if you feel strongly about something, you put in the money. If it's proven to be correct, you get your money back.
I, I guess, uh, you know, sometimes these, um, investigations can go for eighteen months, so it's a long time for some people.
And then they're proven false, and all that time and energy and money's been wasted. So if you have got a complaint, make sure you've got everything in order, pay the money, let it go through the system. I think the system works quite well, but I think they're inundated because people can just put in whatever they want. So this is in fact tightening it up, that people are only going to do it if they know that they have got a proper complaint.
And this is O I A complaints, is it?
Well, I think it should be, every complaint, and, and I think a lot of people are missing the point. I mean, if you look at that, since January twenty twenty-one, that's three months, four months, a hundred and five thousand has been spent. Now, myself, two hundred dollars is too cheap, so. I mean, a hundred and five thousand, that's someone's wages for twelve months.
And through the Chair, can we note that when we spoke to the Assistant Minister about this the other day, she did note that there was a really big increase in the amount of complaints leading up to the local election, suggesting that a lot of the complaints were politically motivated. And I understand that sometimes these take eighteen months and someone might be missing their two hundred dollars. But some poor person also has to walk around with a investigation hanging over their head for eighteen months as well. That could be completely invalid and vexatious.
And that's why I sort of believe that if we can tighten up the, um, you know, um, you can't just go to the police station and say something. You've, you've actually got to go there and, you know, have, have evidence, have witnesses, you know, to, 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 um, make something happen. And I think maybe, I, I don't really understand how they, if they can just take a he said, she said, is that the way it works at the moment?
Through you, Madam Mayor, it depends on type of the investigation that's going on. So there, there are different levels of, um, uh, there are different levels of decision-making, interviewing and considering of evidence. And depending on what it involves, then there, there may be a higher level of scrutiny or a lower level of scrutiny as well. So councillors, can I just say, please, please keep in mind that the way the report is structured indicates that we would bring the- indicates that we would bring, the officers would bring back the motion. That would be, the motion is not in here at the moment, but the motion that would be put to the LGAQ conference.
Yes.
So there's still another step to go. And if I'm not mistaken, we're still waiting for the format to come out from LGAQ. So this is in preparation for that.
So the motion is just that we're going to move something along these guidelines and we can add the anonymous component down the track?
That's correct.
I still, I still think, and I'm not trying to be difficult, is that we're basically saying that we want to make it a little bit difficult for people to put complaints against ourselves, you know, which doesn't sit well with me, that's all. And I do understand that having any complaint against you which involves investigation is horrendous. And you don't want to have vexatious complaints just put in willy-nilly. So again, I'd love to see, I don't understand the process of how they accept complaints, but I think that would be good for me to know how they accept complaints. If they do have to have more, if it can be he said, she said, or if it can be you have to have a witness or you have to have evidence.
Through the Chair, we've had all training on this and people can just put in complaints if we look at them the wrong way.
Councillor Coghlan, that's not what I took out of that training, that's why.
Well, that's exactly what I took out of the training.
That's why I'm suggesting maybe we should get a bit more understanding on that one.
I listen very carefully and that is exactly what I got out and that's what exactly I've been told. Well, we got it in the training, in the training, they said that.
So I believe we have to have some kind of witness or evidence to that, it can't be
No, they can just put in a complaint.
Yeah, it's my, sorry, through the Chair, it's my understanding that anyone can put in a complaint about anyone. Regardless of whether there's witnesses or anything. That's my understanding of the rules. I mean, I've been wrong before, but it's been a normal guy.
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes, anyone can put in a complaint about anything. No, there's no requirement for witnesses to be involved. And again, it changes depending on what the complaint involves. It may be a witnessless complaint. There may not be anyone there to do any of that except the individual themselves. So again, there's all different levels of evidence assessment that are done by different agencies, beyond reasonable doubt, on the balance of probabilities, what a reasonable person would expect, et cetera, et cetera. So that goes across.
Yeah, and I mean, I can understand Madam Mayor's, regardless, I mean, with people not wanting to put in complaints. But I mean, if people are honest about their complaints, I'm sure two hundred dollars, I mean, you know, if they know someone, I'm sure. But I mean, my point isn't the two hundred dollars, it's the money that this council, not ours, ratepayers, of a hundred and five thousand we've spent in four months. And not one of those have been Yeah, substantiated, so that tells a story to me.
Through the Chair, yeah, look, I concur with that. What I think we're asking here is for people that are lodging complaints to show some commitment to the complaint and not to be able to just almost do a Facebook post and send something out that's going to hassle a person in office for a period of time unknown. And then added to that is that significant cost to council, it's huge. In terms of the anonymity that councillor McCrae talked about, I think if they do have to lodge a fee of any description, then they will have to give their name and address clearly. So I think that'll probably take care of itself in some respects. The other point I just want to make is that we need to remember this is submission to the LGAQ. Sorry, it's to the Annual Conference, the Australian.
Sorry, through Madam Mayor, LGAQ.
Oh, LGAQ, the local, yeah, the Queensland one. So the chances of it getting support and getting up is another barrier in any case. But yeah, so I think the simpler we can keep the submission and the reasons for it, I think the better. Thank you.
I guess I would just like to see, again, again, I'd like some more information because I do feel like it shouldn't be he said, she said that is accepted. You know, if ten people are saying you said something over a period of time, that does make for an application, I believe, but maybe not a one-off situation. I don't know.
So they can pay the two hundred dollars and it can get investigated? Through the Chair.
Hey, mate, let's move on.
I think we said all we wanted to say, all those in favour? And I'll just have one recorded as against. Sorry, I just, I've just jumped to a hundred pages on.
Thirteen point six.
Thirteen five.
Thirteen five.
I'm sorry, thirty-four.
Yep, so so that takes us to item thirteen point five, which is the twenty twenty twenty-one annual operations plan update. Can I get someone to move the motion? And the officer's recommendation is that council adopt the third quarter twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one annual operational plan as presented.
Moved, Bowick.
Seconded, Coghlan.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Would anyone like to comment on this one?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I just have one item in there, I'm just trying to find it. The live streaming, I think it's page two twelve. I would have thought that was complete now, it's shown as in progress, I think. Unless there's other parts to it that I'm not aware of, yeah.
Through you, Madam Mayor, we're still working on the microphones.
Okay. You trying to say something?
So through you, Madam Mayor, we're still waiting potentially to look at the cost of lapel microphones rather than these microphones, because one of the issues with the live streaming is actually hearing people. So that's probably the last component, that's it.
Yeah, okay, thank you, no, that's all I heard.
And it also seems to be the one issue I hear is people say they can't hear the public very well. And some people talk quite well into a microphone, some people don't.
Yeah, the handheld microphones are a bit subjective through the Chair because people hold them down low, even this morning I could see that, and not directly speaking into it, so.
Exactly, exactly. All right, so if there's no more comments on this one, all those in favour? And that's carried. So this takes us to item thirteen point six, which is the establishment of a miners' memorial advisory committee. Can I get someone to move the officer's recommendation that council form a miners' memorial advisory committee and commence a membership nomination application? And that council endorse the miners' memorial advisory committee terms of reference as amended?
Move, Coghlan.
Thank you councillor Coghlan and seconded by councillor Tully. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of this motion?
No, I just think we need to push ahead with this with some urgency. Terms of reference are all there, but yes, just move ahead with it.
Well, anyone else like to comment?
Yeah, through the Chair, Madam Mayor, I had a look through the terms of reference on this. It's very functional and it operates like most of our terms of reference. But I'm thinking this particular one needs a bit of an overarching statement added to it around the sensitivities that might be encountered during the unfolding of this memorial. You know, there's a lot of things we need to remember here that there are families still in the town that are involved. There are, I know that the rate of, the death rate in mining has decreased a lot because of the health and safety frameworks over the years. So we're talking about, you know, a history here and a legacy for the town. So the thing that I'm concerned with is that we are still a mining town. And we need to, that needs to be informed into the advisory committee about how that's a sensitivity as well as the people that are, have been affected by the deaths of miners over the years. So I think it's really important that that captures the nature of what this of what this miners' memorial is about. And it needs to be sensitive, it needs to be respectful and it needs to account for the families that are involved, but also the fact that we are, remain a mining community. And I'm just concerned that, you know, monuments that are built will have a negative impact on the community itself if they're not done with great sensitivity. So, yeah, thank you, that's mine.
Thank you, so were you saying you didn't support the terms of reference?
No, I do as a functional article, but I do think we need to build something in there around the intent of it, that it is an overarching statement, particularly if council's going to inject a lot of resources and money into it.
Through you, Madam Mayor, we might leave that for the, once the members of the committee are identified and the council is allocated, and then that could probably be their first item on the agenda.
Yeah, I think we probably need to form a view from council as well prior to that, yeah.
Through the Chair, I think anyone that does go on this committee is well aware of everything you've said. I mean, they're only going to go on it because they're passionate about it. And I believe, like, anyone that wants to put up their hand to go on it will have all those, you know, things you've just stated, will have all them in mind. I think we're all of the same mindset. It's got to be something that the community can be proud of. And, yeah, and we have to be respectful to those families that it does, you know, affect. So I'm agreeing with you.
Thank you, any more comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And I think I can safely say that Johnny Moran and Steve Trevor will be sitting home somewhere going, yee-haw! As they're the ones who actually hit town probably six months ago and sort of lobbed on every councillor's doorstep and asked them about considering putting this together. So, great work from community members. Or ex-community members now. All right, well, that takes us now to a late item, which is thirteen point seven. And it's the Audit and Risk Management Committee meeting minutes dated the thirteenth of May twenty twenty-one, unconfirmed. And would someone like to move the motion? And the officer's recommendation is that council receives and accepts the unconfirmed Audit and Risk Management Committee meeting minutes dated the thirteenth of May twenty twenty-one as presented.
Yeah, moved, Bowick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, can someone second these minutes? Thank you councillor McCrae. Would anyone like to talk about this motion?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, I think there was a lot of work done at the previous meeting and which followed on. I'm still of the belief that we probably don't have enough meetings of the Audit and Risk Management Committee meeting. So we probably need to discuss that at some other forum. But, yeah, it's covered a lot of territory, there is progress being made on, you know, unfolding our procurement system and those sorts of things and keeping the checks and balances in place. So, all going well at the present time, thank you.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor. Any other comments on this one?
Yeah, sorry, through the Chair, I'm just going through the minutes here and it says that, my apologies, and then it's, I've seconded some. So, one's right by email, but then there's another one down says that I've seconded. So I think we maybe should look at that.
Through you, Madam Mayor, whereabouts, so you've seconded?
On page three of eleven. Moved Jeff King, seconded Mick Tully.
Via email, but then you go down further. And there's another one where Microsoft, oh, sorry, that was a Microsoft Teams meeting. But, yeah, I can't, I'm not a hundred percent sure that.
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, I was under the impression that we sent round a flying minute afterwards.
Yes, that's the one by email.
Yeah, and which you would have responded to via email.
Yes, that's the first one. But then there's another one, item four point five.
Four point five, yeah.
The four, through you, Madam Mayor, the four point five one definitely shouldn't be there. And I think that's a mistake that's been made in the Mr Acting Manager, that's a mistake I think that's been made by the minute keeper. Yep.
Thank you.
Because, yeah, you certainly weren't there for the
No.
Internal audit.
I remember the email one, but not the other one.
Through you, Madam Mayor, the email one was to actually confirm the minutes.
Correct.
That was simply the purpose of the flying minute, that the other one is a mistake without a doubt.
Thank you.
So do we want to change the motion?
Yeah, so through you, Madam Mayor, if we can change the recommendation to as amended rather than as presented, then if the councillor is happy with that.
No problem, thank you.
And my apologies for that as well.
No problem, apology accepted.
No. Just re-read it as presented. Sorry, as amended, my mistake.
The officer's recommendation, the motion is that council receives and accepts the unconfirmed Audit and Risk Management Committee meeting minutes dated the thirteenth of May twenty-one as
Amended.
Amended.
Moved, Bowick.
Thank you. Thank you councillor McCrae.
Thank you.
Is it seconded for that?
Ah, councillor McCrae. Yeah, she is quick this time.
Sure am I.
Do we have any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so this takes us now to another late item. And I'll get someone to move the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts the Western Queensland Alliance of Councils Building Blocks of the Future communiqué.
Same move.
Thank you councillor Fortune, would someone like to second that motion?
Yeah, seconded, Bowick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. And I guess it'd be up to myself and the Deputy Mayor to talk about this. So last week, myself and the Deputy Mayor travelled to Richmond to the Western Queensland Alliance of Councils, which was Building Blocks for the Future. This was actually twenty-two mayors getting together from the entire west of Queensland and talking about our common issues and common goals. So some of the topics for that agenda was regions on the rise. And basically, that's acknowledging that life is different after Covid. And more families and individuals are looking to make basically a move to more and moving away from city life and looking to get more into a tree change or a bush change and how to take advantage of this opportunity. Some of the other things we talked about was transport and roads, which was from a federal perspective. The other thing was the financial capability and capacity, and that was from a state perspective. We also talked about local government grants commission, and that was a methodology and a review that is happening. One thing that I guess Manoisa would be very interested in, we had a discussion on air transport. So this was, as a councillor, we weren't involved in the panel because it was actually talking about relegated routes and how the state government actually sort of what's the word? I'm trying to think of the word.
Regulated routes?
Regulated, but also helps subsidize fares. So it was important that they understood that Manoisa was still in the same predicament. We had a parliamentary inquiry in two thousand and seventeen. And we're still in the same boat. Now, I do know that we had a man from the state government, and I do have his credentials here. Yeah, and so they're into a fourteen month already into, looking into this particular problem. Now, forty months and they've only talked to seven councils and none of them were in the Western Alliance. So we sort of made it very clear that this is taking way too long and that we all wanted to be interviewed, every council with a major airport. Yeah, and that has been arranged, so that was a good outcome. We also talked about a rural and remote councils compact, which is with the LGAQ. We also had digital connectivity, which is another presentation that day. And don't worry, the Deputy Mayor will come in and fill in the gaps that I'm glossing over. And we also got to present on housing. Now, this is important to Manoisa because at the moment we are running out of housing stock. So while we do whinge about the fly-in, fly-out crowd, but we also, we're also giving them an excuse not to live here because it is tougher to get quality homes, either to buy or to rent. because it is tougher to get quality homes, either to buy or to rent. So this is not just in Mount Isa. There's twenty-two councils that are in the same position. And it also covers public housing as well. And public housing are actually getting rid of some of their stock. And this is a concern because they're actually looking at an old census in two thousand and sixteen, which we didn't believe was actually correct. And the last thing we need to see is people who should be entitled to public housing now competing on the rental market with people trying to get accommodation. So, this was very, this was a very long session. And it was really interesting to see how many other councils are impacted by the lack of housing. And we have set up a few meetings with some state government officials. So hopefully, you know, we can come up with something that not only helps Mount Isa, but it also helps the entire west. So I'll hand over to Deputy Mayor now, here probably, did I miss? Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, before hand over to the Deputy Mayor. The other things we talked about was sustainable recovery and resilience, transport, roads from a state perspective. We also got a state opposition update, which is always good. And now I'll hand over to the Deputy Mayor, so he can fill in the blanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I think you've covered, and the Communiqués covered, you know, pretty much everything there. I would say that Senator McDonald made a comment there about being a very powerful lobby group in Australia, or one of Australia's most powerful lobby groups. I think what she says is right. I mean, there wouldn't be too many forums where there's twenty-two councils in attendance and largely agreeing on all the, on the issues and matters around the infrastructure and the lack of nation building that's probably gone on through the corridor, down to the southern borders and the Northern Territory border. So I do think it's a very, very good alliance. I think Mount Isa will benefit from it. And I do think that all of those things that they are taking to ministers, who, there was a lot of those sort of people in attendance from federal and state governments that, you know, were listening to what was being said. And I think that the recognition of those issues and matters will come to the fore as we go on. So, yeah, yeah, watch this, I think it's a great thing. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, through the chair, I think the concept of the Western Queensland Alliance of Councils, as Senator McDonald stated, is a very powerful lobby block for Western Queensland. I think it's something that politically is looked upon as a bit frightening for people in the western, sorry, eastern part of the state because far too long now out west in Queensland has been forgotten as far as infrastructure goes. And, yeah, I'm glad to see that transport and housing options are in the Communiqué. And I'm guessing without much detail as well that through the financial capacity and capability is, that energy was also mentioned through the discussion too as well. And, you know, the ongoing economic benefits to that. It's a great, I think, initiative. I think that Mount Isa will, and the rest of the Western councils will benefit from it in the long term because we need that voice in there. You only have to drive between Mount Isa and Townsville to see the state of our highway. And it's in very poor condition compared to the east coast highways. And, you know, there's something like that, that connectivity through transport is something that needs to be slammed home to federal and state because, you know, it's a number of, it's a national disgrace, our national highway. The A six back out to Townsville because, you know, there's parts there where it's signed as eighty kilometres on a national highway, which is, I think, is disgusting. If we can't travel at a hundred kilometres per hour on any national highway in Australia, it's very poor. So I welcome the Western Queensland Alliance of Councils formation and looking forward to progress and benefits to Western Queensland.
Thank you, Councilor Fortune. And definitely, roads were talked about in depth both federally and state. So, and just on the, it was that popular. The whole of Richmond was booked out, so I think over two hundred people converged on Richmond. So they had people staying in Huandon, they were camping, they were lying back at trucks. So it just goes to show you, no one expected the support that this Western Alliance of Councils got. And I think both the state and federal government have definitely taken notice. Okay, so if there's no more comments on this one, all those in favour? And that's carried. So for item fourteen, it's general business, which we have nilled. So council will adjourn briefly. We've got some food here, and we will recommence in our closed business. Thank you, everybody who attended today. And thank you.
Forty six and we are now going back into open meeting. Oh yes, could I get someone to move that we reopen the meeting?
Move.
Thank you, councillor Streton, all those in favour and that's carried.
Oh, okay, all right. Good morning, everyone. I would like to welcome you reopen the meeting and I'd like to move, I'd like someone to move the motion that council accepts, oh sorry, that council, that pursuant to section two seven four of the local government regulation twelve, twenty twelve, council resolved that the meeting be closed to the public for discussion of the following matters, see the local government's budget.
I'll move that.
Thank you, councillor Fortune, someone second that motion?
Second, Streton.
Thank you, councillor Streton, all those in favour and that's carried.
Forty six and we are now going back into open meeting. Oh yes, could I get someone to move that we reopen the meeting?
Move.
Thank you, councillor Streton, all those in favour and that's carried.
Oh, sorry, still being interviewed?
Should he be in here?
So he can come in and then go back out again if he's free. He been interviewed or not? Oh, could you ask him to come in then leave again, please? It just covers him.
Yep.
Just want to get a few extra steps in for the day.
Don't sit down, lads.
So we're just about to go into the next item which is fifteen point one, which is the approval for COVID nineteen local roads and community infrastructure LRCI program phase two. Would you like to declare?
Sorry, what? Didn't you just do fifteen point one?
Are those enclosed?
Enclosed, so we just.
Do you need to do it for open?
For open.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, for the record.
The record, what are you, leaving?
Sorry.
What do you want me to do? You tell me what you're going to do.
Sorry, councillor, do you have a conflict of interest?
Yes, I have.
Sorry, what is your conflict of interest?
President of the Manaus Rice Club.
Will you be remaining in the room?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Okay. All right, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council formally endorse proceeding into a grant agreement by nominating the construction of a poultry pavilion shed and abolition facility at the Kennan Park Events Complex under the COVID nineteen Local Roads and Community Infrastructure Program phase two with an additional council contribution of one hundred and thirty eight thousand one hundred, one hundred and eighty four excluding GST as reflected in the twenty twenty one twenty two capital budget. Would someone like to move that motion?
Move.
Thank you, councillor Streton, someone like to second that motion?
Second, Streton.
Thank you, councillor Streton, all those in favour and that's carried. The time is now eleven forty nine and I now declare the ordinary minutes, meeting of the Manaus City Council closed.